Growth and advancement of opportunities at Suella is really inspiring. It's something special. I thank everybody for your hard work, all of the students who are here tonight. So to acknowledge some of these students, I'd like to invite Darryl Buck to join me, if he is here. And Mr. Buck, if you would maybe offer a few comments and then call out the students' names and John and I will honor them. So I just wanted to share some numbers. So Skills USA, if you've never heard of it, they do serve over three hundred and thirty thousand students annually each year. And they have served fourteen million annual students since nineteen sixty-five. And they're actually recognized by the U.S. Department of Education as well as the U.S. Department of Labor. So for us, we competed at Skills USA in Alexandria the week of April second. And at the competition, there were over a hundred and six different competitions. But for Suella, we competed in thirteen different contests. And out of those thirteen different contests, we placed in the top three in eleven of those. So out of those, that basically gave us a grand total of eighteen medals. And out of those eighteen medals, eight of those were gold. So in order to compete at Nationals, you have to win Gold at State. And then if the gold competitor cannot go to Nationals to compete, then the silver medalist steps up into their place. So that's who we have here today are the gold medalists that are going to compete at Nationals. You want me to call now?
Sure.
Want to go with the certificates first?
Yeah.
Okay. So the first one is Ms. Sophie Cantler. She is the gold medalist for the state T-shirt design competition. She also won silver in the audio radio production contest.
Sophie, congratulations.
Do you all want to do it individually or?
Yeah, well, let's wait so.
Okay. All right, the next one is Mr. Connor Cubian. Did I say it right, Connor?
Yes.
I've been practicing, man. He was a part of a team, so his partner is Mr. Matt Di. Matt, if you want to come on up also. They competed in our television video production contest and they won gold. And Matt, if you don't know, Matt is actually a faculty member at Suella, but he is also a student.
Congratulations, guys.
The next one is Ms. Morgan Di. She couldn't be here. She won gold in criminal justice. The next one is Mr. Harold Dunon. Mr. Dunon, he won the culinary contest at State in Haroldur sixty-five. How old are you?
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine, and he's still educating those little kids. The next one is Ms. Madeline Guillory. Madeline ended up winning three medals at State. She won the gold in the advertising design contest. She won the gold in the pen contest. And then, correct me if I'm wrong, bronze, I think it was for the T-shirts.
Yes.
Yes. The next one is Ms. Sabrina Heffron. And Sabrina is our commercial baking gold medals. Sabrina is also our Treasury Secretary for the club. The next is the President of our club, Mr. Damon Lewis. Damon won the gold medal for restaurant service. And he's been my right hand this semester, so both of them have done some extra work. And lastly, we have Ms. Cameron Scheck Snyder. Cameron is representing us in the state pen contest. She won silver at State.
All right, let's do it. Any group? John, look at this doing at Suella graduate right here, right?
Yep.
All right, Ms. Kimberly, to give a pause, I'd like to honor some interns.
Hello, everyone. We don't have our full slate of interns here, but I just wanted to let you all know that if you just check out the city's Facebook page at Lake Charles City Hall, you will see the photo that was captured today, the group photo, including all of our interns. We have like fifty-some-odd interns working in various departments, HR, accounting, community development, the mayor's office. And so it's just great to have all of that energy and life here in City Hall. But we do have a few of the interns here tonight, and if you are an intern with the city of Lake Charles, please stand. Just to point out, the two gentlemen over here are IT interns. Young lady here is an intern in community development, and the gentleman back here is in planning, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so just a few of our interns, but yes, definitely, we are happy to have them. And I think they're still here, so that means they're enjoying it.
All right.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
I just want to say great kudos and thanks to Kimberly. She's really worked hard on trying to increase the amount of interns and all the department heads. I think Kimberly's bothered them once or twice about trying to push for more interns. And I think you said the number was fifty?
Yeah.
And I have never seen us have more than maybe a dozen interns at the most. So this is a really awesome number, and great kudos to the whole team. I think it's important that young men, women who are in that college age get interested in City Hall. And so I think this is a really awesome program. Good job, Kimberly.
Yeah, good job, Kimberly. Appreciate that. Ms. Thibodeau, the new items and carryover items, please.
Yes, sir. We'll begin with appointments. Appoint Chairman to review bids to purchase an annual supply of road-based limestone aggregate per specifications for six months with the option to renew for up to three additional six-month periods for use by the Public Works Department Streets Division. Appoint Chairman to review bids to purchase one new portable sewer camera system for use in the City of Lake Charles Public Works Department Streets Drainage Division. Appoint Chairman to review bids to purchase an annual supply of janitorial supplies for use by various City of Lake Charles divisions and departments for a twelve-month period with the option to renew for one additional twelve-month period. Public hearings and ordinance ordering demolition and authorizing the City of Lake Charles to enter into an agreement for demolition of structure located at thirty-eight twenty-eight Ernest Street, the congregation of Our Lady Queen of Heaven Parish Roman Catholic Church owner. Another demolition at four-one-four Ford Street, Denny L. Jones Montgomery owner. Another demolition at twenty-four oh-four Fitz and Rider Road, Riverside Baptist Church of Lake Charles, Louisiana owner. Another demolition at fourteen-eleven Pine Street, Unity Baptist Church of Lake Charles Incorporated owner. Another demolition at five oh-one Seventh Street, Ibram Investments Incorporated owner. Another demolition at eight-ten East Preale Lake Road, Dustin, Gaither, and Rise and Hours Enterprises Incorporated owners. Another demolition at two-fifteen North Shattuck Street, Rose Tyler owner. Another demolition at five oh-two North Prater Street, Fernando E. Mendez Galen owner. Another demolition at seventeen oh-one Seventh Avenue, Earlene Green owner. Another demolition at twenty-two sixteen Poplar Street, Warren Bradley Estate and Charlotte Bradley owners. Another demolition at twenty-five oh-seven Woodard Street, Louis Morris Charles Estate owner. Another demolition at nineteen hundred C Street, Carl or Washington, Vicky Renee Matthews, Linda Francis Matthews, Paulette Matthews, James C. Talbert, Tracy Michelle Talbert, and German Talbert owners. Another demolition at nineteen oh-three North Prater Street, George Booker Jr. Estate and Zerlin Booker owners. Another demolition at five oh-three Jackson Street, Wesley John Montgomery, Tyrell Montgomery Harmon, Diana Montgomery Nolan, Donna Montgomery Hudson, and Wesley John Montgomery Jr. owners. Another demolition at twenty-one thirteen Fifth Street, Nelson Bernard and Connie Bernard owners. Another demolition at twenty-one oh-five Fifth Street, Double B N N Investments LLC. Another demolition at twenty oh-four Second Street, Charlie Investors LLC owner. Another demolition at sixteen twelve Brick Street, Diana Alfreda Valentine Wheeler owner. Another demolition at thirteen oh-six Summit Street, Deborah Collins owner. Another demolition at twenty-two twenty-five Coletta Street, Tammy Stanton, Elwood Stanton, Michael Stanton Testamentary, and Lee Roy Stanton Second owners. Another demolition at three fifty-six Boston Street, Frank Y. Price and Dolores R. Price owners. Another demolition at twenty-four hundred Sixth Street, Patricia Ann Taylor owner. Another demolition at twenty-seven oh-eight Abel Circle, Sandra J. Stevens, Wilbert D. Stevens Estate, and Reginald J. Stevens, subject to tax sale to State of Louisiana owners. Another demolition at eighteen oh-two Ingleside, Michael Casey O'Jay and Cynthia Lee Butts O'Jay owners. Another demolition at nine nineteen to nine thirty-three North Shattuck Street, Crosswalk Realty Investments LLC owner. Ordinance is for final action and ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing the City of Lake Charles to enter into an agreement for project number CP three-three-five-three Center East Water Treatment Plant Filter Replacement. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing the City of Lake Charles to enter into an agreement for project number CP nine-seven-seven-eight Civic Center Chiller Replacement. An ordinance adopting and levying the annual property taxes villages for the City of Lake Charles for the tax year two thousand twenty-three. An ordinance amending section eight dash one, article one, chapter eight of the City of Lake Charles Code of Ordinances, adopting the two thousand fifteen edition of the NFPA One Uniform Fire Code, two thousand fifteen edition of the NFPA one-on-one Life Safety Code, and the two thousand twenty-one edition of International Fire Code. An ordinance amending section four dash thirty-two of the Code of Ordinances to specifically include a dangerous dog as defined under Louisiana revised statute fourteen one oh-two point fourteen to the definition of a dangerous animal, and amending section four dash seventy-one of the Code of Ordinances to provide for general civil penalties for violations of chapter four animals and foul. An ordinance authorizing the City of Lake Charles to submit an application to the Calquash Parish Road and Drainage Trust Fund, and if granted, to execute any and all agreements in connection therewith. An ordinance authorizing the City of Lake Charles to accept the public sewer and sidewalk improvements installed on Nelson Road from EVT Lake Charles LLC for ownership and maintenance. An ordinance authorizing the City of Lake Charles to enter into any and all agreements for wastewater treatment plant basin A dash zero-two and A dash zero-six Sewer Evaluation and Emergency Point Repairs. An ordinance declaring the intent of the City of Lake Charles to acquire a full ownership interest of nine parcels of adjudicated property pursuant to Louisiana revised statute forty-seven twenty-two thirty-six and providing further thereto. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Lake Charles to enter to a cooperative endeavor agreement with North Gate Plaza LLC, granting incentives for the construction and enhancement of a retail store to promote economic development. An ordinance amending chapter twenty-one, article nine, cross-contamination prevention, backflow preventer installation and inspection requirements of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Lake Charles, Louisiana. An ordinance amending section twenty dash seventy-eight of chapter twenty of the Code of Ordinances to prohibit parking on both sides of Eleanor Street from Legion Street to Progressive Street. Resolutions, a resolution accepting project number CP three-zero-zero-zero First Avenue Trail North of Broad to I-ten as substantially complete and authorizing the advertising of the forty-five daily period. A resolution accepting project number CP three-three-three-six Oak Park Lateral Drainage Improvements as substantially complete and authorizing the advertising of the forty-five daily period. A resolution accepting project number CP three-four oh-three River Ridge Drainage Improvements as substantially complete and authorizing the advertising of the forty-five daily period. A resolution approving the mayor's appointment of members to the Historic Preservation Commission. A resolution authorizing the City of Lake Charles to issue a request for proposals for the most qualified vendor to provide cybersecurity services for the City of Lake Charles with a companion ordinance. Ordinance is for introduction, number forty-six is the companion ordinance, so skip that one. Introduction of an ordinance authorizing the removal of yield signs and the installation of stop signs on Catherine Street at its intersection with North Goss Boulevard in the City of Lake Charles, Louisiana. Introduction of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a multifamily loan agreement with HRI Communities LLC for the purpose of using City of Lake Charles Direct Allocation Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funds for Calquashu Heights and Affordable Housing Development. Introduction of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter to a multifamily loan agreement with Banyan for the purpose of using City of Lake Charles Direct Allocation Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funds for Calquashu Heights as an affordable housing development. Introduction of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a multifamily loan agreement with MGM Development Group for the purpose of using City of Lake Charles Direct Allocation Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funds for Woodring Number Two and Affordable Housing Development. And I have one more item that was not on the list, which is introduction of an ordinance authorizing the City of Lake Charles to enter into an agreement with a firm to provide network services for Water Division and Wastewater Division. And that's all that I have.
Thank you, Ms. Thibodeau. Mr. Weatherford, do you have anything?
I do not.
Mr. Marks?
No, sir.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. August?
Thank you, Mr. President.
You heard that?
I'm gonna preface what I have to say with these words. I am not trying to change the law. I'm not throwing shade on anybody. As a matter of fact, let me say that Lake Charles, as we've seen tonight, we have a very great population. We have talented people. We have people who are experienced, who can spearhead many of the programs that benefit many of us. So I want to put that out there, so I don't want my words twisted at all. When I first took this seat, as I've said many times, I really thought my job was in police dispatching. The area that I now represent was inundated with drugs, drug dealers, prostitutes, and it is because of the very great work that we were able to get through law enforcement that the area was basically cleaned out. Now, it's not perfect, but we don't have those problems anymore. I'm now getting calls about our minor children, and I use that word very literally, our minor children, who are killing each other. And I'm being asked what our law enforcement agents is doing about it. I would like to know, and I'm so glad to see Chief Caldwell here tonight, are there any summits being held? Now, we know that you're not gonna babysit, but are there any summits being held to handle this problem? It's not a, and I want to make clear, it's not a North Lake Charles, South Lake Charles problem, it's a Lake Charles problem. Now, I'm speaking with some people who are affiliated with law enforcement. I'm told, well, this is because these kids go and open cars that are not locked looking for guns, because I ask, where could the guns be coming from? So that's one of the reasons. These are guns that people who are licensed to have them leave them in their cars, and these kids are going in and stealing them. But I'd like to quote Judge Judy, who always liked to say, when somebody wasn't mature enough, they're not fully baked. These young people are not fully baked. They have very, what do you wanna call it, off the cuff? They're just quick, very quick to demand respect, and they don't really know what it's all about. So I was just wondering, and I'm basing my question on when I was on the Human Relations Commission, I learned a lot about law enforcement and how it operates. But one of the things that really stuck in my mind was that video that was produced to show what happens when people are tasered. And it was very effective. I know if most people would see it, they wouldn't want to be tasered for anything. So I'm just wondering if there couldn't be a video put out, even if you had to circle the identity of these young people, but could there be a video made of some of these young people who are, from the time they are arrested, if you can catch them, to the time that they go through the process to show the steps that are taken to corral this problem? I value my life, and I wouldn't want to be caught in crossfire with someone shooting at someone, going down the street, shooting at each other in speeding cars, or being in my church, or a grocery store, or shopping center, and have someone who's ready to fly off the map and take my life. And I think that we can't babysit these problems. Don't misunderstand me. We cannot babysit these problems. We cannot foresee where they're going to occur. But I think that we should have some tools that we could use to maybe even promote in the schools where these children are, at least part of the day or part of the time, and show them what could happen. You know, they don't think when they're pulling the trigger. It's only after they pull the trigger that they realize. And then the parents want to say, oh, he was a choir boy, and he was on the usherboard, and he was a nice child. Yeah, those are all things that are well and good, but it took that one moment for that child, as we want to call them, to fly off the handle and kill somebody and then ruin their lives. So I'm just wondering, Chief, is there something that's being worked on to confront this problem? Is there anything that maybe a summit of all the law enforcement agencies here could get together and maybe brainstorm and come up with something? Law enforcement is doing an excellent job, so I wanted to make that pretty clear when I started this. Very few people are not caught and punished, but I'm talking about pro activists. Is there anything we can do to put some kind of fear into these young people and make them realize, hey, is this worth it?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. August. We do have some initiatives and videos that we go into schools. We have some other programs that we are trying to get started, some type of mentoring, how to grow into an adult, things like, first of all, making relationships with these young people and teaching them just some quality of life things that they may not get taught at home. Simple things like changing your oil or changing a flat tire, that they may not be taught those things in an attempt to build a relationship with them. As far as a video of a child, I don't know that we can legally do that. Like you said, if you block, if you blocked off their face, we may be able to. I would have to check.
It was just a thought, you know, if you get into a meeting with other entities and you come up with any kind of good ideas, I just threw that out. It might have been something that you could think about, but it's getting frightening. And I have people who call me, and they're going, Ms. August, I'm even, I'm not even safe in my home anymore. I never know when a bullet's gonna fly through. And I just think that when people call me and start doing things like that, I need to bring it out. I need to bring it out in an open forum, because even someone in the audience may have some ideas that they could present to us at a future meeting. Maybe I've touched on something that'll start a conversation. But it's just horrible that we have such a growing city, and we don't want to end up like other cities that are around us. And then I got a call about what happened Sunday, because part of it was so close to me. And I didn't know anything about it, you know, but had they scattered or come into my neighborhood, you know, it would have been another story. So I just think it's time for us to maybe start concentrating more on catching the bad guys, but maybe putting some fear into them, because I know of one situation where this young man was shoplifting, and when the owner called the police and he was caught, the boy came out of the store, his friends were standing out there, and he said, seeing and all, guys, you know, and it's not your fault, because I've learned that you pick up the criminals, but it's the court system, the judges, that make the decisions as to whether they're gonna be handled in a certain way. So that's why I'm saying, I don't want anybody to think I'm complaining about anybody. This is our problem. And I'm just bringing it out there, because I think we need to start taking this a little more serious. We don't have the scared straight program. We don't have all those good programs that they used to have. But we gotta do something. We've just gotta do something. And you can't, if I ask all these people sitting here at this front table, what do you think is, who's at fault? I bet every one of them would have a different, it's the parent's fault, it's the scientist's fault, it's the school's fault. Everybody would have an excuse. But we've got to come up with some common ground where we can touch upon this and at least see if we can't curb it, because it's getting out of hand.
You're absolutely right. And again, Ms. August, we are open to any ideas. And I'll tell you that we work well, and we, as unfortunate as the amount of crime that our youth are committing, we're in a way blessed here, because the Calquash Parish and the Mark Center and the Juvenile Justice Center out on Preale Lake Road really do a good job. And there's a lot of resources that they have. And, you know, one step is to educate people, educate parents, and educate the community about that resource center that we have there to get kids there before they get too deep into the criminal justice system. But again, Ms. August, we are open to any ideas.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Ms. August. Mr. Jackery, do you have anything for tonight?
Yes, sir.
I have something small. I want to hear.
Just a thought, and I don't know if I've got, but I thought about this some too, about what August is talking about. And, you know, I know that Mothers Against Drink started, that if you drink and drive, what can happen? And I know when I was, I'm fifty-nine, I know that when I was young, there was no, it wasn't an issue back then. It was just like, for a grown-up, you drank, you drank and drove, and which wasn't good. And, you know, there's probably some guy, I might be lucky to be alive, so I probably, like a lot, yeah, I think statute of limitations has passed for that, but I probably was lying to the bill when I shouldn't have been. But I wonder if you do some sort of, you know, I don't know if some of these kids don't understand the ramifications of shooting somebody, what can happen to them. And you would think that, and they probably do, and it's the heat of the moment, then maybe it wouldn't stop them. But if we did some program like that, where you shoot a gun, somebody, what it does to them, I don't know if that would work or not, but that may not, that may be something worth exploring, similar deal that where they go out to school and show why it was be drinking, driving, getting erect, and what happens to the damage to the vehicle, you know, what happens when one gets a bullet in the chest, and what the outcome is. I mean, I don't know if that makes, you know, Ms. August, I don't know if that makes sense to your educator. I think that could work, you know. I don't know what ages don't do it, and that's a matter I want to certainly expose, young children and that kind of thing. When they're in high school, they know about it. They have friends or acquaintance that are involved in stuff like that. Just a thought.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherford.
Well, I agree with you, because what really helped was when they started showing kids when they drank, when they would drink and drive during prom time, and have all those bloody bodies, all that similar, that really helped curb the violence. So that's another good idea, but you just need to start thinking about it a little more seriously.
All right, Mr. Marks?
Before you go, I want to do the flip side. This weekend, I kind of take it upon myself to monitor the things that were going on. If you stay on social media long enough, you're gonna get a whiff of everything that's going on in the city. And I'd like to commend Chief and the police staff this weekend. They had a presence at just about every event that was going on, and it caused deter. I mean, at one time, you had people leaving the beach, they went to another location. Police was there. They left there, they went to another location. The police was there. They even went to car washes and different places like that, trying to find a place to hang out. And that could be, Ms. August, to what you're saying, to deter a lot of that crime. Our youth don't have hangouts like we used to have. You know, we used to be able to go to the civic center on Sundays and sit out and do things like that. Maybe we can get together and brainstorm and come up with something. But the police presence is what deterred a lot of things. There were a lot of things going on this weekend that could have potentially been bad, but Chief, you and your police officers were there at every turn, and I think that deterred. bad, but you and your police officers were there at every turn, and I think that deterred. So I commend the police.
Thank you, Ms. Marks. Any other comments? All right, Ms. August, I mean, Ms. Thibodeau, I have a request for an ordinance. I met with the owner of Zippian's Music, and he's interested in doing the Walk of Fame along the city. He's met with Ms. Marinovich, and would like to, as a placeholder for an ordinance, put a cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of Lake Charles and Zippian's Music Foundation pertaining to the Walk of Fame. Anything else? Anybody from the public want to come up and talk? Oh, we have a card. Your name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name is Donald Ray Hanchett, address twenty-eight twenty-three General College Street, Lake Charles, Louisiana.
Do you want this submitted into the record, or this was just?
Well, it could be submitted into the record.
I just, okay?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the Mayor and the City Council, for letting me be able to speak today, but I'd like to thank the Mayor for what I'm getting ready to speak about. It's the owner, Occupied Housing Rehabilitation Recovery Program Grant Agreement, that you went to Washington, D.C., and got the grant for the money to come down and help southwest Louisiana after Hurricane Laura and Delta and the May seventeenth flood. My house was severely damaged, it was destroyed in that, and through the program, I have insurance, homeowner's insurance, but as we all know, the majority of the people in the city, or citizens in the city, had to file litigation against their insurance companies, and I'm one of them. I applied for the grant at the first onset of the grant, and I was awarded the grant after about a year, I guess, and the grant was for sixty thousand dollars. I came up here to City Hall several times, it's been multiple times, at least six or seven times, pertaining to the grant that I was awarded. The grant started out at sixty thousand dollars, it went down to twenty thousand dollars. When I was awarded my grant, it dropped down to eighteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-one cents. I met with Mr. Randall Davis, he's in charge of the contractors, over the contractors for the city to do the work. On a change order, they told me that would be no problem, getting a change order to occur if you met the guidelines, which I met the guidelines. I have ceramic tile, I had ceramic tile in my home, that my home demoed, and they tore all of that up. When I addressed, the first thing I addressed was the change order, and first, Mr. Randall Davis said, when he came out and inspected my house, said the change order, that's not a problem, we can address that, and it would be addressed, because he put nanoleum tile. That would devalue the value of my home by putting nanoleum when I had ceramic tile in my home. I brought it back up there to Ms. Dana Jordan, and she works with Mr. Tizano in that department on the fifth floor here at City Hall. Mr. Davis came back to my home with his assistant, Stoney, and they thought I had ceramic, boxes of ceramic tile in my home, but not just that, my windows needed to be changed, the outside boarding around my home needed to be changed, the house is just not complete, it's fifty percent complete.
Mr. Hanchett, we have a three-minute rule.
Okay, I wish I knew that before.
No, no, no problem, we can give you more time, but is there anything specific you want the council?
Right, right, yeah, I do. From the change order from being brought down to eighteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars, when I addressed Mr. Tizano's department about that, I wanted to know what would happen to the remaining balance of that sixty thousand dollars, that grant is in my name.
Okay.
The grant is in my name, and I could never get no answers. I asked for the grant number, I was told that the grant number wasn't gonna be given to me, that it's public information, that grant number should have been given to me. It's two hundred and sixty-nine people in this city that was awarded that grant, that's public information, those names should be given to me.
Who can help him out, Corey?
I'll tell you what, Mr. President, while we do this, Mr. Hanchett, thank you for coming tonight, let me gather the information, and this is the first I'm hearing about the intricacies of this matter, and I'll get you some answers by the end of the week.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. There's one more thing. Since I filed suit against my insurance company?
Yes, sir.
They told me at, on the fifth floor, at the department that's handling this, that I'm ineligible for the grant as of now until I settle with my insurance company, but I don't understand how is that possible when it's a grant? I don't see that. It's a grant that's given to you, for you to get back in your home if you went to Washington, D.C. to get, to keep people paying taxes in this city, that's it.
Well, we'll look into it, I know there's a caution against duplication of benefits that is a requirement.
I looked into that, too, I went online and I called FEMA in Washington, D.C., and I talked to some people about that, and that would, we'll discuss it.
Okay, I will check into it, I'll get some answers before the end of the week.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
All right, meeting adjourned.
Mr. President, I just wanted to say to everybody, if you didn't make it today, just kudos to the whole city team, it's been thirty years since we had a new water plant, and we just broke ground on one today, and it's gonna be a great metaphor for this whole city, and I thank the council and the whole team for making that happen, so good job to the Lake Charles.
Meeting adjourned.